City Council. Meeting, first on the agenda, we have O's of Office, Council Hill, so I'll let you do the swearing. You want us to move?
Are you usually in the picture with?
I think last time it was Peter swearing in and this was Peter and Blevins.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States and the State of Oregon.
The United States and the State of Oregon.
And the Charter and the ordinances of the City of Estacada.
Charter and ordinances of the City of Estacada.
And will well and truly perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of the office of City Councilor to the best of my ability.
Of the office of City Councilor to the best of my ability.
That's the easiest thing you'll ever have to do from this point on.
Alright. Now, if you'll please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Alright, pledge of allegiance to the five of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I get roll call, please?
Councilor Blevins.
Here.
Councilor Dolezal.
Here.
Councilor Hill.
Here.
Councilor McRae.
Here.
Councilor Metcalf is not here. Councilor Tenbush.
Here.
Mayor Drinkling.
Here. Thank you very much for that. Okay, first thing we have is a work session, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero zero eight, title sixteen, preview of our sign code. So I will let you take that later.
Thank you. Taren, could you promote me to? Thanks. Yeah, just a second. I'll share my, I have a short presentation for you guys. There we go. Okay. Well, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. So I've been researching potential ways to reorganize and generally improve the city's sign code. And back in April, Steph said that we would come back to you before adoption hearings to present the recommendations. And so tonight, I'll share with you what I found in my suggested revisions in just a short presentation. And then after that, I'll try to answer any questions you might have. But by the end of the session, I'm hoping to get confirmation from you all as to whether there's general support for the code revisions that we're suggesting. And also to find out whether there are any policy items that you would like to see drafted alongside the kind of the real, just the reorganization of the content that's already there. Okay. And so just to give a little background, on April twenty-eighth, Council directed staff to address sign code deficiencies. There had been some questions about signs in different parts of the city. What the permit standards were for those. But since then, staff has been researching local city codes. I've looked at six. Codes in six cities around the area for potential solutions. And so this is the current format of our sign code, and it's kind of hard to see what the shortcomings are just from looking at this list. So I'll kind of walk you through what I think makes this format hard to read and to apply. So we have a general regulations section that's pretty full there. You can see there's lots of subsections, and that includes some technical standards. Technical, like procedural and technical regulations. And then alongside all these standards for specific types of sign. And then there are sections outside of the general regulations section that are, they deal with standards for other types of signs. So it's kind of confusing. And then on top of that, many of the current definitions that we have in the code are vague, and there are some terms in certain time, terms and types of signs that are missing from the list of definitions that really should be in there for clarity. And so the proposed format is here, also probably hard to understand just looking at that. So I will walk you through this as well. There are a couple new sections that that are proposed. And the first is kind of a how-to guide, and it's similar to Portland's. And I have a couple screenshots here that you can see. So yeah, this is from Portland's code. Let's see. The arrows there are pointing to the questions. That are asked. So I think this sign code could actually be, or this how-to guide could be formatted better so that it's clear where those questions are. But basically, it's a step-by-step guide for how to apply the code. Help users figure out whether the code applies to their sign, and then also what standards apply, and also how to get a permit. And the other proposed addition is a glossary of picture examples, like the one that's used in Oregon City. And I have some screenshots from that, too. So we don't have anything like this in our code with actual pictures in it. But yeah, this is, this is what is in, what, this is what Oregon City uses. I don't think it's actually in their code. It's just a, there's a link to a document. I think it's on their website. See, yeah, here's some more pictures. Yeah, and then the next group of code sections will help users decide whether their proposed sign is exempt from the code, prohibited, or will require permit. And then there's a couple procedural technical sections related to permit application process and construction standards. And then we have a section under which all the sign standards are grouped. So these first three subsections here regard the locations of signs. And the rest of them just include the standards for specific types of sign. And finally, the last section deals with code enforcement and removal of nuisance signage. And so in a nutshell, this is, these are the changes that staff is proposing. And now if there are any questions, we can discuss those. And if you'd like to discuss among yourselves. And then finally, before I leave tonight, I would just like some clarity on the, on the two questions that I put up here. Would the Council like to see any revisions to the format that I just proposed? And does Council wish to amend any sign code policies or standards alongside with just the reorganization of the code itself?
Along with the, the picture gallery of the examples of the signs, to have something that references a key representation of how that's represented and having that overlaid on our zoning map. So that a person can just right away look at the examples of the type of sign, find the sign that's similar to what they want.
Yeah.
And look at the zoning map, and we have a key of the different types that references the picture gallery.
Yeah.
So that someone doesn't have to, I tried reading through that code and, and it's just.
Yeah.
And I, and I look through code all the time. It's a nightmare. So just a visual representation, someone could say, I've got a four by eight sign, and I look at the zoning map, and here I'm in the zone, and I look at the key, and I go to the picture gallery.
Yeah.
That would be, I think, very easy to use, along with examples of the nuisance signs and our non-conforming signs, examples, not of just the allowed signs, but some of the non-conforming signs. That's what I like to see. I, I think that would make everyone's life a lot easier. I would like to, I had a hard time even going through that and finding out what's allowed in each of the different zones. It's so robust that the code is just so lengthy.
It is.
I would like to see that key over a zoning map and then talk about making some adjustments to, like the allowed signs.
That's great.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's basically just two sections. It's residential and then everything else. So that would be a pretty easy table to make, and also the map, just to make the, you know, the two. Yeah, two shades, basically. Then there's also the ODOT, like what's visible from ODOT, and that's been kind of an issue lately, too. And that could also be demarcated in the map.
And.
So does this, will this address the concerns that were brought to Council last meeting or the meeting before, but of?
I think a lot of those concerns were policy-related, just around the standards, what is allowed and where. This, as proposed, would not address all of those questions. What was asked of staff in April was basically just to go through and clean up the code as best we could and not really change any of the content of it. So yeah, that's basically the second part of this. If, if there are any pressing policy changes you'd like to make, now could be a good time to do that. I mean, if it's really contentious, maybe now is not the good time. But if there's something, any standards that would meet with widespread Council approval, it might be a good time to include those now.
So the, the signs on the old ranger station, the signs that were out there, we don't, we don't control that, the policy on those, right? That's ODOT, or is that?
It's both.
Okay.
So any signs that are posted that are not representing a business that is on that site and is visible from the highway, those need to get approval from ODOT before they come to the city to ask if they meet, also meet the city's sign code.
Okay. So there's nothing, nothing that, I mean, we can't change that part of it.
We can't change the ODOT part. Yeah. We could change our own. I mean, I don't think that there's any ORS that says that we have to have a sign code that, you know, besides allowing a minimum of expression, like for political signage and such, I don't think that there's anything from the state that mandates that we have certain distance requirements or anything like that.
I just, I like the idea of local businesses being able to promote other local businesses.
Yeah.
So you know, that was a, you know. I mean, if we could change that. I don't know if everybody agrees with me, but if we could change that in our.
Yeah.
And, and I will say that, that our code doesn't say that you aren't allowed off-site signs.
Okay.
That was, that was in ODOT.
Right, that's just in ODOT.
Okay.
But it does limit the number and size, so.
Can we get something in there that differentiates what we set and what ODOT sets? So.
Yeah.
Calling you over that.
Exactly. Yeah. So I'm just going back to the last slide. So if you see at the top on the right there. So we do have standards in the code right now that spell out clearly that signs in ODOT are visible from ODOT right away, or they fall under the jurisdiction of ODOT. Oh, wait, so wait, maybe I'm misunderstanding your question. You mean what kinds of signs or just where?
What is, where is the line, where is the line drawn? Where, where's the definitive line between ODOT and us, and where's the gray area between?
Yeah. That's a good question, because it just, the code just says visible from the highway. Does that a thousand feet visible from the highway? Is it within a hundred feet?
I think that is.
Unclear. Yeah, yeah, that is unclear. And that could be something that I look into now and change with the code. I mean, if I could find a definitive answer for that.
That could go back and forth, like they're calling you, and then they're calling ODOT, and then it's like, well, it's your decision. Well, then it's their decision, and then.
Right, right. Yeah, in our conversations with ODOT, the only thing that they've said is if it's near the highway, they didn't define what that meant. And if it's, if it deals with off-site businesses, then it needs to go through this approval process. Yeah. But yeah, I can, I can look into that, too. Okay.
And we're required to have it in our code that we require them to go to ODOT for approval before coming to the city?
Um, I don't know.
My thought is just that let ODOT regulate, regulate ODOT regulations, and we have our code for what we want to allow. And if ODOT is more stringent and they want to enforce it, then let ODOT enforce it.
Yeah. So right now, it's kind of, the code is kind of written that way. It just says you need to get ODOT approval. It doesn't say anything about the standards.
Is, is it us requiring ODOT approval, or is ODOT requiring that we get ODOT approval?
I believe it's the latter. I think ODOT is requiring.
It's the what?
It's ODOT is requiring.
Okay. We could give verification of that. I just want to make sure that it is ODOT's dictating to the city that in your code that you're required to, for them to get approval from ODOT prior to them issuing a permit.
I'm not aware of, yeah, I actually don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah. I just wonder, and I want to know if that language for the ODOT requirement can be removed.
Yeah, huh. Yeah, I wonder if that was added as some part of, like a part of a TSB or something like that.
Because they don't enforce it equally. I can tell you, my experience is that ODOT picks and chooses. It's typically complaint-driven, and it's very particular, like we had, and not, we had a sign that was in a right-of-way next to six other signs. And someone made a complaint about our sign, and they made us take our sign down, and the other six signs stayed there. And so if ODOT wants to regulate their regulations, have at it. But I don't like to have a requirement that we have to have people go get ODOT approval just to be able to come and get our, our approval. We can issue a permit, and if ODOT enforces it with them, then I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Hey, John. So I went, tried to go dive into the ODOT sign stuff, and it was just a nightmare. But a couple of things stood out, and one was, the way I read it, the, you know, apparently it's a federal scenic byway starting from Estacada. My understanding is now that it starts from the Portal Park and then heading that way. But the, so as driving in, there's such a difference in terms of line of sight. I mean, some places you can see, I mean, does that mean if, if you read it too broadly, someone couldn't hang a sign up off their house or something like that? And that doesn't make sense. It doesn't pass the, the reasonable test.
Sure.
And so then, taking a look, driving in. And you know, like you can see the ranger station, however far that is off of the highway. And then as you get into town, you can see some of these signs and temporary banners and that sort of stuff, like right along the sidewalk. You've got the, the fence, you know, right along the, the roadway, the wooden, the board fence like that. And so you probably don't want, so there's probably a a way to treat those differently, like a distance from the highway. That sort of thing. What that number is, I don't know. But I can see like the, the ranger station being so far back, maybe those rules being different than for like that board fence right there, that sort of thing. And then just the consistency. The definitely would, would prefer to have an Estacada city limits, having our rules first. And not needing, to what Mike was saying, not needing to check up on the state, because there's no telling the state actually cares. And I'm worried about the, the phrase, it's a new phrase apparently, but malicious compliance, where somebody doesn't like somebody, and so they start dropping a dime on them to, to start just to, frankly, just to irritate them. So I'd be interested in, in more clarity from us about things like how far away from the highway.
Yeah.
I don't know if we want to deal with the content in terms of, you know, obviously, we don't want any. Well, maybe we do. I don't know. We don't, though, I'm sure, inappropriate signage, you know, inappropriate language, that sort of stuff. I don't know if we need to put those sorts of rules.
We, we can't really.
Oh, we can't?
First Amendment.
Okay.
Yeah.
But that sort of thing, really just the distance thing and, and and just having our own rules. This is what you need to do to, to put a sign up in Estacada.
Yeah, clarity on the distance would be really helpful, because I also agree. I don't think that the intention of the state law is to just like regulate signage that's, you know, a thousand, fifteen hundred feet away from the freeways. I think my concern with just removing it altogether is that you might come into situations where someone goes through all the processes for the city and gets signed off, makes a sign, builds a sign, whatnot, and then ODOT comes in and says you needed to get permission for that, and they didn't even have a heads up about it. Yeah, I guess that would be my concern with, with removing entirely. But I think that it could be removed, and I think that I think, yeah, I'm just gonna have to look into it to see.
That would seem to be my concern, is if we remove it altogether, we permit a sign, and then ODOT comes along and says, no way, you can't have that, then there's a conflict there. But if we'd put a caution in there, something that signs, you know, within so many feet of the right-of-way of ODOT may require ODOT approval.
Yeah.
And then if they get to them, they get to them, and if they don't, they don't. And if it meets our code, but we could probably at least put a caution in there or something, or.
Yeah.
This just popped into my head, but for years, there's been a sign in Carver, right in the middle of Carver for Stonecliff. You know, pointing which direction to go to Stonecliff Restaurant. It's been there for years, and ODOT has never, you know, and it's right off of two twenty-four, so.
Well, it's not, they're not prohibited. I'm sorry.
Good. So I was gonna say the same thing. We don't know if they got a permit for that or not.
They likely got a permit for it. Yeah. So yeah, it's not, ODOT's standard isn't that those signs are prohibited. It's just if it is an off-site business, it needs to go through their, their, like, highway advertising programs. Yeah.
So if the City of Estacada approves something and it's outside of, like, ODOT's approval, they have their, their, they have jurisdiction to say no, so they take precedence. So we need to know, I think we need to know, like, where the hard and fast line is.
I agree. Yeah, I'll look into that. Yeah.
Yeah. And now. I like, I like the idea of keeping the, I just don't like the requirement of having to go dot first, leave the language in there that signs, and we can even put the code reference from ODOT that says if signs are visible, then you're required to do this, first so that they're known. Well, what brought it up, though, was the signs at the ranger station, which got permits from the city. Did ODOT call to tell them to take it down?
No, it was code, code enforcement. Just noticed that there was a lot of signs.
So we issued the permits at the city, gave it to them, and, but we were enforcing ODOT's regulations, and after we issued permits from the city, we were enforcing ODOT's regulations for them?
The signs didn't comply with ODOT or city.
Oh.
So they were.
They got the wrong kinds of permit.
They were, they were permitted in error.
Oh, no, no, no. Let's be clear.
Yeah.
Those signs were not signs. They were banners. Under the banner rule, there's a sixty-day banner rule in place in our code. You've probably read it. It fell in the banner category. It's a temporary sign. So in sixty days, it would have to be pulled down. It was promotional. They were doing promotional for people that send their kids to that school. Their school has people who have all kinds of jobs around town, and they were advertising these banners, and in sixty days, they would pull them, and they got the proper paperwork from City Hall. But the confusion is, they were banners, not signs. There's a big difference. We have two rules. We have it written. We have street banners, and we have regular advertisement banners, like you saw there. A school does it on their fence. You can go around the school at any given time during a sports event. There are several banners around it. Those are promotionals. They, they don't take theirs down until the sport season's over with, but they've, they've worked that out through the district. But on our particular issue, ODOT did not have a problem with those signs. That was never the issue. But that was the perception that ODOT site of, you know, would be a problem. But they didn't complain. That's not what happened. It's just the relationship between a sign and a banner. That was a banner, not a sign. So we have to clarify for.
Definitions, yeah.
The definition.
Yeah, exactly.
What is it exactly? Would it be a banner or would it be a sign? We need to make that clarification, and that's really what this is all about, I think.
I actually have an illustration that we can, that's kind of, I'm glad you brought this up, Mayor. So right here, in Oregon City's code, you can see that middle picture. They call that a cross-street banner. And I think that if we changed what we currently call a banner in our code to cross-street banner, and then define banner as what you're talking about is, you know, longer signs that are non-rigid. I think it would, it would clear up a lot of the problems that we had.
I agree. Just simplify the, the code to where it's readable and understandable.
Yeah.
And then I think that would help us with this whole issue that came of those signs that were on that fence. Because I don't think, yeah, and I don't think ODOT was ever really the culprit here. I mean, they, they come into play if you get too close to the highway, being a sign maker, obviously, I know that. But those, those particular signs were far enough away from the, the highway that ODOT really wouldn't have had no jurisdiction over that particular issue. But I think clarification is really where we're at here.
Absolutely.
And I think for our code enforcement to do their job, they need a clearing.
Exactly.
So that's really what I.
We need a distance. I mean, ultimately, we need to know what that distance is. So I will drill down into that and try to find that.
And you're absolutely right. The, the code is twenty-some-odd years. I helped write it. So I know that code pretty well.
Yeah.
And it's cumbersome.
Yeah.
It is. And it needs to be cleaned up and made easier for everyone to understand.
Yeah.
But yeah, I think you're absolutely right, and I think giving him the ability to do that would be a great idea.
Okay, do you want, John, wanna go first? That's fine.
Please, you.
Okay. All right. So my question is then, we need some clarification from the Council. Like, do you, do you think the community enjoys that type of advertising? Where they can say, hey, I'm driving into town. I see banner. I've been needing a plumber. There's a plumber that's advertising on the sign, and are they gonna like that? Because I know in some communities, they don't like seeing signs. I've heard this from other cities, like, no signs, no banners. We don't want to see this advertising. But maybe that's helpful to people here, and we don't mind seeing that. You don't mind a whole row of, of banner signs coming in here, because they're, are they, A, are they temporary? What does that mean? And then B, like, we how close can, can they just, do we have no limitation on them, or do you want us to limit them? I don't know if I'm asking that right, Ellen, in a code type of a way, but I just, we don't know, like, we're just stuck with what the code says right now. And it says that, as we're interpreting it, which could, needs to be interpreted by the Council, not by us, is that those signs had to have a certain distance, and they, and we weren't counting them as a banner according to what, how Ben, our banner application works. And so we need to have clarity on that, I think, on what, what the Council thinks the community wants.
So I'm I get the, the cross-street banner. That makes perfect sense to me. But something laying, laying flat against a, a structure. You know, having one being a banner and one being a sign doesn't make sense to me, because it's laying flat and it's just, it's just there. And so in that circumstance, where you've got, whether it's flexible or rigid, if it's up against a wall, it's, it's a flat surface, and, and that seems like a sign, even though not by definition. And so it doesn't make sense to me to have rules be different than, and that.
We have one that's temporary and one that's permanent, though. That's the difference between if you assign it's permanent. If you apply for a sign to be on a building or on a flat surface or on a wall, that's permanent. A banner is temporary. It's never meant to last, and it's not made out of the, the material that would last. So no matter what you do, it can't be a permanent signage. That's why it's temporary, and that's why it was put into play. For some businesses, and being a small town like we are here, that's their only advertisement. I mean, occasional eighteen by twenty-four corex sign that you see out there that somebody puts onto a telephone pole, which is illegal also. But this is the way people advertise, and that's why the banner rule was put in there in the first place. It's a cheap way for, for construction workers and plumbers and everybody in town to put out something temporarily during their busy season and hopefully get enough business to keep themselves a business. That's when, when I was talking with Randy Healy, our old city manager, his concern was that we have a way for people to advertise. So we put that into it, and I went through Oregon City and Sandy. And now Sandy, what happens with sign codes if you get too restrictive? Sandy just did that. They did a thing where you had to have a dark background, and your sign had to have a portion of it lit up, so you could see it and, and nothing else on the side. Well, that didn't work. And after a while, they just freed that up and changed their whole code back again. They let people advertise, because it can get very restrictive. Like Oswego, same thing. They won't let you put any sign up unless it has gold and black. Gold and black, Brittany. You know, but this is what happens, and that's why he needs this clarification. We need to make sure that it's, it's easy for people to use our sign program that we have here, but at the same time, affordable and something that they can, they can feel comfortable with. If we get too restrictive, that can change the whole thing, and then we have problems left and right. It just, it happens.
So is a sign is permanent, you said?
Yeah.
And a banner would be temporary, but could a banner be a rigid? Or, okay, can't be rigid?
No.
Okay. And then as far as the banners look, I think that if they have a logo, that that.
that that should be their banner or their, yeah, this should be their banner. You know, I don't think there should be hard restrictions on that, right? That way, they see the logo, they know the company.
We, we can't restrict the content. So we can't, we can't do anything.
I mean, like, as far as having like a dark background and it lit up and stuff like that.
No, they're all printed. I mean, it, it's whatever goes on the banner, but like I said, it's temporary signage. When you get into signs, uh, signs can only be hung out of certain materials. You're either using steel, aluminum, wood, you know, these things that'll hold up. That's what makes a sign permanent. Uh, you can't use banner material up in the air uh, for a sign and hope that, you know, it doesn't hit somebody or, uh, you know, something happens to it. So that's, that's why there's signs and there's banners, the difference.
I, I think we could get there with the, with the application for the, for the banners as a temporary. What's the, I, I didn't look at the application for the banner itself. Is it sixty days?
I believe so. That is the limit for, um, for temporary signs. Um, banners, I believe also. I don't have the.
The cross-street banner application, that was also limited to sixty days.
Uh, we just had temporary signage regulations and sign regulations.
Yeah, I mean, this could be done in the definitions.
I think that, you know, I think you guys are on the same page. I, you're, you're just saying that it's essentially the same thing, and I, and I agree with you. If you have it on a flat surface, what's the difference between that and a sign? I would just make the same argument if it's not made of banner material and it's a, a different type of material, rigid material up on a fence, and it's temporary signage, that the both of them would be the same thing, whether it's a banner or temporary sign. Whatever the material is, because it's not going to have the regulations for the construction and the standards for a permanent sign.
Yeah, I suppose it wouldn't, yeah.
So I, I think we could get there with just saying, sign it, a sign permanent application and a temporary sign or banner slash banner application.
So then are we just talking about the length, the amount of time it can be there?
The time, the time it can be there, and then there would be a size restriction, I would imagine, that we'd want to put in place so that we don't have billboard-sized banners going up.
Four by eight was the biggest banner you could put.
What would, what's your ideas for the measurement? Would it be from, from the high, like for regulating a distance from the highway? Where would you pull that point of reference from? Cause it'd be nice.
The, the distance from the highway. I have no idea. We didn't, yeah, we would just have to check with ODOT so that, like, yeah, so, because whatever they, whatever their standard is, is what we would advise or what we would um, communicate to them.
I was just curious if it's vague, like if it says visible from the highway. That's not measurable. I like the idea of like a hundred feet, two hundred feet, whatever it may be. To meet the spirit of what they're trying to do without, with actually having something that we could regulate so that we can show people that we're treating people fairly. Cause one person's visible is different than another person's. Me and Jerry's vision was a little bit different. We don't have his glasses on.
I think uh, I, I hope it doesn't like end up like this, but what if ODOT comes back and says, it's just visual, there's no distance, right? Can we make a distance? And if we tell them this is what our distance is, right? I don't want them to be like, well, we can see it, but they don't have some hard fast line, and then we create one, and then now we're in a pickle because we approved it and now ODOT's saying, take it down.
I think that we just do something like what um, Council McOrritt said, where we just basically say, ODOT requires this if it's visible from the highway, like, just a note that those restrictions, you know, restrictions may apply, that it's on you to go look at it.
And their regulations supersedes ours. And just let people know.
Exactly, let them know, and then they can do their due diligence and like find it out.
So it doesn't sound like there's an issue with the length, like sixty days or whatever it is. That doesn't sound like that's, that's the issue, right? So we don't really need to address that.
Or the numbers or any issue, like, like could somebody line the whole front of their property with these temporary signs and you don't, there's no, you don't have a concern about that? Cause I think right now we're, we have a restriction on it has to be only a certain amount of your property frontage can have signage, right?
In certain zones. There are formulas and they have to do with the, you know, the linear amount of, yeah, the, the, the footage of frontage you have with a, with the, with the highway or, um, yeah, there's just a couple of ways to calculate how much total signage is allowed.
Or if your business fronts two major streets.
There's also standards around that, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
So if it's a temporary sign, are you, am I hearing that it doesn't really matter the amount of signage? As long as that each sign is not.
Is, you know, cause back in the early days when the sign code was written for a reason, the reason it was written too was another one. Uh, the parking lots over here, there used to be people who would put big four by eights out there with markers that they just write something in it and leave it up there for, you know, days on end. And that's the reason we put the clarification in there was to take away that part of it. So you can't just make a sign and stick it out there, um, you know, and write on a board or, or whatever you're gonna do. And the sign is not sturdy, it could cause an accident. There's all kinds of things. So within reason. Yeah, you'd have to put that in there, is that the signs are of quality or they meet a certain standard in order to be put out there, so.
Yeah, I think that there are materials, there are material standards in there for what constitutes a, a temporary sign and.
So if it's a temporary sign, though, there's no, you don't want a restriction on the amount of it, is that what it, that's what I'm confused on.
Well, point was brought up that a lot of these smaller uh, businesses, like that's their only way of getting their business out there. I don't see a problem with, I, I don't see a need for restricting the amount. As long as they're tactfully in place and look nice.
You're not gonna be able to regulate tactfully though, because you're opening the door to its First Amendment, so when we let it, the banners we don't like are gonna be just as welcome as the banners we do like. So I, I don't see, I, I just don't want people constructing things for attaching. I, I don't know if there's a way to do that. Like if you're using a natural feature to, you got a fence and you're putting stuff on a fence or something, but I, for temporary signs of people erecting things, I think that that would be regulated by the constructions. Structural standards, okay, yeah.
So my stance on signs is, is, is the secret. I, 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 I'm not a fan, I'm not a big fan of signs, but advertising local bus, uh, local businesses, advertising other local businesses, I, I do like that idea. I just, I don't want, you know, I don't want to see, I don't want to drive into town and see the, the entire fence line uh, around the daycare covered in, you know, covered in, in signs. I don't, I mean, I don't want to see that. I want to see, you know, if there's, if there's a few, they're spaced out. That's one thing, but to have that entire fence line covered, um, I think is, is visual blight. And, you know, not something I'd be interested in seeing driving into town every day. Um, yeah, I'm, I, like I said, my position on signs isn't secret. I don't like them. I, I mean, I don't like political signs. I don't like, you know, seeing, you know, I, I just don't like seeing a bunch of signs. I think it's visual pollution. Um, but like I said, ad, the local businesses advertising for other local businesses, I, I, I'm, the idea is growing on me. I just don't want it to get insane, you know, and have the whole highway lined with.
I don't think it'll get much worse than it is now. Do you think it's bad now?
Um, I think you get, it, it, it gets bad there, along that, well, it has gotten bad there along that fence line.
Hasn't been during political season, usually.
Uh, u- usually, yeah. Um, I haven't seen a lot of other, you know, uh, uh, I missed the banners that were up. I didn't see them. Probably because I'm used to seeing the po- political signs and I turn my, you know, I turn away from it just because I think it's, you know, but like the, before you turn right to go towards Carver, um, Terry Emmerit has that property over there where they've got all those, no, they've got all the sheds where the, the, yeah, no, not the houses, the, um, the, the sheds that they're trying to sell, pre-built, pre-built sheds. Well, there's a structure there. Um, there's a structure there that'll hold six, I don't know what size signs, but there's a structure built that'll hold six signs, and I don't want to see something like that. You know, I don't want to see something like that put in a, you know, even if it's a temporary sign that, you know, and they just rotate it, rotate it every sixty days. I don't want to see a permanent structure built.
Place for that, because they can't erect something without going through the city to get.
Yeah, structural permitting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I think we've covered that.
Okay.
But that's good.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Johnson.
I think political season, you know, set that aside because that's not normal, but I, I think, you know, it's reasonable that a, a property owner is going to want their property to be appealing visually, and I think that would mitigate what you're talking about. Um, because I agree, uh, it's, it's pretty busy, but I think um, for the vast majority of the time in a year. I don't expect it to be that way just because of the, the property owner's pride in their, in their property.
Uh, it's currently, it's, it's one square foot per lin foot of frontage on the street, right? I think is the way it's currently, and I was looking at it for the, the restaurant over here.
So while I have this up here, I can't really, I can't look around, but maybe Ellen can pull it up.
Yeah, I was just trying to get an idea. So I, I'm estimating the frontage there at seven hundred and seventy-five square feet. I just wondered if the current code applied to it, and you got a four by eight banner, it's thirty-two square feet, it's twenty banners. If that applies to that situation, if I'm remembering right, I thought it was one square foot per lin foot of frontage. And if that's the case, then you could currently have twenty signs up there with the code the way it is. So I, I don't think it would be more, if I'm not misremembering.
So you're talking about the.
Yeah, no, yeah, I just, is the, is the same limitations for banners, temporary signs as applied for permanent signs?
Um, well, the, the, so those signs were considered freestanding signs because the, the where banner definition reads, they are not banners, even though they are made out of banner material.
Yeah.
So we consider them to be freestanding signs, and I calculated how much, sorry.
Yeah, you're fine.
Yeah, I wrote this up for Mr. Heave, just so you can understand. Where is it? Yeah, here we go. Yeah, the allowances. So on that lot, a maximum two freestanding signs were allowed along the highway frontage. And then one additional freestanding sign was allowed elsewhere on the property, and so that was the, that's the monument sign, basically. This is Estacada Timber School, and out also says the Community Fellowship. Um, a maximum of six hundred square foot, square feet of signage is allowed onsite total, and that's all types of signage. Not just freestanding signs, and then the, the limit for freestanding sign size is um, up to a hundred and fifty square feet. And can't be taller than thirty. So there's all these formulas for calculating this stuff and.
Is it the onsite signage that I'm thinking of?
I think it is onsite. I think, I think what you're talking about is total square footage of, of signage.
Yeah, for onsite.
Yes, yeah.
Advertising, like for the business that's there, maybe.
Oh, um, well, we don't regulate that. That's only the, an ODOT thing. That's nowhere in our code. It doesn't say anything about offsite or onsite businesses. That's just what we learned about ODOT's standards.
I think what, what you're talking about is the code sixteen point seven two point oh four, oh five oh A one says total sign area of two square feet for each linear foot of building frontage or one square foot for each linear foot of lot frontage.
Correct.
Yes.
And that, and that's not regulated neither of these.
That is the total.
Okay.
Neither of these were, like, could you?
It's either or.
Okay.
Okay, okay, okay.
But originally, that's, see, that's something that should be looked at because I don't think that using the lot size versus the building size, because any other city I've, I've worked in, it's always been the building, never the lot.
Okay.
So the frontage of that particular building, so you'd get, you know, you'd end up with a four by eight or whatever the case may be. If it was, you know, twenty-five feet by whatever, that's how you'd figure out your, your thing. It was never the lot size, so I don't know where the lot came into play. Uh, because lots can range. I mean, you get, you can end up with hundreds of feet of signage on a small building that would look awkward.
That's true.
And it wouldn't make any sense. So that would be something I would look at, changing and go to the, the actual face of the building as your measurement.
We could just reduce it to, to just that metric and just.
Yeah, the lot doesn't even come into play.
Okay.
Cause based on driveways and everything else and which way it's facing, that could be huge.
Okay.
Yeah, but that would be a change, I think.
Because it's two square feet for each linear foot of building or one for the whole lot, whichever was larger.
Yeah.
So it, but it depends. I mean, if you're wanting to have, well, again, so those, the banners are now temporary signs and there's no, no restrictions on those, so we wouldn't have to fit into the size.
Well, the restriction would be in the time limit.
So it's the time, not the, not the, they wouldn't count towards the amount of signage that's are allowed there.
If that's what council decides.
And I'd like more discussion on that. I'd like to look at kind of the existing situations around town on, based on building size and lot size before like making a decision to change that. I just, because I was doing the math, the only reason I say that is I just want everyone to kind of be aware of what that does to all the businesses currently in town and all the non-conforming situations, because we were trying to figure it out down at the restaurant, and I was going through the code and trying to figure out where we can calculate our signs for um, helping Steve with the restaurant over here, and it's, it's a small building, but it's got some length on the highway frontage. And a lot of those buildings over there, and I just like, it's very, it's not as much as you might think.
Well, your lighting box was based on the, the one that's up top.
Yeah.
That's thirty-one feet long, by two foot higher and three foot high, I can't remember.
I think it's three, yeah.
So that was based upon the front of the building and that sign was put in, and that's still considerable. You have two streets, basically.
Yeah.
You have the highway and then you have, um, is that Peach Street right there?
Yeah, actually, it's not even the highway. You're not, that building, that's not on the highway.
It's not on it and it.
But it's visible.
It's visible from, yeah.
So you could kind of stretch that, that's an island in between. ODOT's probably.
Yeah.
Well, that's as clear as mud, I think, but.
No, but we can come back on it, I mean.
Does it help you to?
This does help me. I mean, there's a lot of ideas here, and I thought I was gonna take notes, but I don't write fast enough, so I'm just gonna listen back to this discussion. It's all recorded.
Some information, like he said, lot versus, um, and, and look at some examples, and then maybe clean that up.
Yeah.
Um, and then on the other part of it, as far as
The temporary, temporary signage.
And maybe we could come to a conclusion after we look at some different ideas.
Okay.
That will work for everyone.
Yeah, okay, I can do that.
But I think we're on the right path.
Okay, good.
Cleaning it up idea, that needs to happen.
Okay, yeah.
So.
The visual glossary is nice.
Yes.
Yeah, 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 I was really, I was happy when I saw that, and I do have to say, after looking at many other cities' sign codes, they're all a mess. They're all a mess, and ours is not as bad as some of them, and it's short. So it's concise, so we want to keep it short. We just want to make it more readable and make, help staff and uh, users of it, other users.
Anything, anytime you can make something interactive where they can, you know, click on the zone, you know, if they could click on the zone and it tells them what, what signs are
Yeah.
or allowed in that zone, anytime you can make something interactive, I think is, you know, in this day and age is gonna be, um, you know, easier, more beneficial.
I think a map and a table is gonna be really helpful in that. Great.
I like that idea.
Great, anything else? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you.
All right. We are now at system and community group comment. Um, I don't have any in front of me. Is there any online?
Nope.
Okay, the consent agenda, we are now at, uh, June ninth, twenty twenty-five, uh, city council minutes. What is that referring to?
Um, the consent agenda.
Are we approving the June ninth?
Yes, uh, the consent agenda includes the June ninth council minutes, um, resolution twenty, twenty twenty-five dash twelve for um, the fee schedule, resolution twenty twenty-five thirteen for a transfer, um, transferring appropriations, which is just moving something from one year to the next, and then the sliding contract and the resolution in support of Timberlake Job Corps operations, which was requested of it.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Right, second.
Got a first and second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Okay. So we are at, which one am I up here?
Department and committee reports.
Okay. Department and committee reports, I'll start with you, Melon.
Okay, I have a little slideshow. I will keep it brief. Thank you, Terron. All right. My next slide, I regret to inform anyone who did not know that our city attorney, Peter Watts, unexpectedly passed away a week and a half ago while he was at work, and it was completely unanticipated. Um, they, the EMTs tried to do what they could, but they could not revive him. And so, um, we are going to miss him a lot. He was a very great asset to Estacada. He was a member of our team. He advised the council um, on risk and on, just through so many decisions, and I felt. And I felt like he was really able to feel the um, like the priorities of our council, of our small rural community. And um, and still balance that with the um, his legal, all those legal stuff that he knew. And the risk that um, we would face through either side of decisions that were being made. Um, so it is a great loss. And um, I don't, I don't really have anything else to say other than we'll really miss him. Um, however, we do need to uh, go ahead and fill that position. So I'm going to be providing options for interim city attorneys at your next meeting, which will be on July fourteenth. We have several things going on right now that we really need um, to have a city attorney in place. So um, Elaine and I will be making calls. We've been getting some um, recommendations from other cities. And then also from our judge who needs to move from pro temp judge to permanent judge um, at some point here too. But we'll call some attorneys, come up with a couple of the best options and who would fit, be able to fit into our schedule, bring it back to you on the fourteenth to appoint interim. And we'll also do a request for qualifications for um, folks who might want to be our city attorney. And bring those back to you in September so that um, we could appoint a new city attorney. But that is terrible news. So.
So um, it is very sad um, that this happened, but I do understand that, you know, we do have to move, move on as a city. Um, is it more expensive to go with a firm over just an attorney? Um, because I think that, you know, if, I mean, if Peter was part of a firm, we, you know. It's unfortunate situation, but we wouldn't be in this, we wouldn't be where we're at right now. So um, if, if it's possible to look at that, you know, the cost difference between uh, going with a firm over individual attorney. Um, and if that is even an option, I don't, I don't know enough, but.
A lot of cities do that. And so we'll try to bring some options to you that would present that going with the firm where you have like one point of contact. But then depending on what the situation is, they direct you to another attorney. I kind of have a feeling that's more expensive. But I don't know for sure because I haven't, haven't looked around. And then there's the other, um, like Peter was just the all around. He was able to do contracts and he did land use and he did um, code. He just did, he did so many things. And so I don't know if there's anybody else out there like him, but we'll see if there is, we'll present that and then, and also some firms that we could potentially go with, so. And that's something that we could, if that's a priority, could include in the request for qualifications.
It's just, you know, if it's a, if it's a, a firm, you know, the, there's more, more attorneys involved. And you know, they don't, like, we're gonna hire an attorney and it's gonna take them, you know, they're gonna be playing catch up for um, for however many months. Before, you know, I mean, they can advise us on stuff, but they're gonna be playing catch up for, for the first couple of months, just trying to figure out what. You know, I know, I understand Peter was a great note taker. Um, so um, I hopefully it's, it's very easy for them. But you know, I just, that's my fear for the future is if, you know, if we go with another individual attorney um, that, you know. I, I want to put this, the city in a better position to where, you know, if this unfortunate situation happens again. Um, you know, it's taken care of. If somebody, you know, somebody leaves a firm for whatever reason, there's, you know. However, many other employees that are there that can just jump right in and, you know, so.
Okay. Any other thoughts or can I move on? Okay, all right. Next slide, please. All right, just quick update on the summer water usage. Um, that's the chart that you'll find on the homepage of the city website. And so far, uh, it's looking good. We're kind of arcing our way up a little bit as we're heading into the drier time of summer. I just wanted to remind folks that Clackamas River Water Providers offer free residential landscape water audits, which can help you conserve water. And can save you money. Um, if you adjust your sprinklers correctly for the amount of water you need. And then also I wanted to highlight the stage one alert, which is where we hit one point four million gallons a day for three days in a row. Typically we'll kind of go up and we'll come back down, up and down. Um, but if it's, if we hit a real hot spell, um, then we go up and it tends to stay up. And so um, if we hit that stage one, we'll put out notifications, ask people to reduce water usage by ten percent. We'll stop watering the lawns on public property. Um, we won't do that. We'll probably try to keep them alive, but we won't, definitely won't water them every day. Uh, and we just ask people to, you know, avoid washing your cars or filling pools until we can get that back down and make sure that our reservoirs are, are filled. So, so far, so good. And we're heading toward the end of June. So, but July and August are the, the tricky months. So with the, with the new um, newest upgrade to the water treatment plant though, um. I think that it'll make it a little easier to keep our reservoirs full. So, next slide, please. Okay, um, Oakview. Um, our Oakview traffic speed report. This is just kind of an interim because it's taking longer than I thought. We put this, the twenty mile an hour speed limit signs up. Um, and we did gather some data just because it had been a while. Um, the eighty-fifth percentile was twenty-three miles per hour, which fits within the limits of what the council was um, recommending at the mark. Your March tenth meeting, I think it was, that in a residential or school zone, the eighty-fifth percentile should be nowhere in three miles an hour over. And then other areas, it should be no more than five miles an hour over. Um, so, so far, so good. We do have the flat, the um, radar feedback sign, but we're waiting for one piece of that. I think it's a cord or something. So it's not installed yet. As soon as that comes in, uh, Public Works will get that installed and then we can do another uh, test run on that. But just wanted to let you know, we haven't forgot about it. Um, we are working on it. And I sent the um, the data that we collected to Chief Mendoza, see if he has evaluation or anything that he wants the deputies to do. In response to that. All right, next slide. Quick calendar update, uh, because we won't be here together for a little while. This Thursday, the twenty-sixth, there's our first concert in the park. And then on July fourth, ten AM parade, ten PM fireworks. So fun all day. Um, then July tenth, our second concert in the park. Um, up at the amphitheater and then on the fourteenth is your next council meeting. We have a fifth Monday in June. And so then, so it'll be three weeks till we gather back here for a meeting. And then the last slide, I believe, is, okay, so today we got a call and I don't know, Mayor, if you want to announce this or not, but.
Esteem Drazen, our representative, uh, called us and let us know that we were awarded five million. Uh, from the state of Oregon, uh, in the big uh, scheme of things. That's pretty good. Um, so we're on our way. Um, we're really excited. So I think we've got it launched off, so I think we're ready for shovel to ground and start making things happen.
That's right. That's right. So that makes our total grants and forgivable loans up to eleven point four million dollars, which is about nineteen percent of the project. Um, so that will help to keep the rates down and um, we, we'll keep our ears open. We won't stop looking. And I do want to give a big shout out to Elena because she's the one who knows how to access that system, show up and, and do the um, testify. And I think the mayor went and testified at one point too. We appreciate that. But anyway. Anyway, so it's great news. Five million dollars um, to go towards our wastewater project. So, um, any questions?
No.
Okay.
Okay. One comment. Just one of the things, I'm so sorry to hear about Peter, but one of the things I really enjoyed about having Peter here. Was the consistency of having someone that could really read the council um, and the relationships. And just kind of get a feel for the direction of the council. I'm, I'm open. I don't like the idea of requiring it to be a large firm that represents the city. I'm open to the idea of a firm or, or maybe a partnership, some, a smaller firm. But having a consistent representative that knows the council. I, I don't like the idea of having a different attorney showing up at every meeting.
Completely.
Um, I really like the fact, and maybe he's a, a, a pink unicorn or whatever, just so rare, his, his, his experience. But if there was someone that had similar experiences, I would like them to not be discouraged from applying.
Right.
For the position or smaller firms. But having a consistent representative from the firm that's coming to represent that firm at, at the council meetings. Um, someone that, that we can meet before we hire them. So that when we're making that decision on who we want to go with, we can, you know, start to ask questions of them and get to know them a little bit. Before we make that decision, not just pick a firm and then just have some person that we've never met before show up. That's my only comment on, on that part. And so sorry to hear, I, my, my condolences go out to the family and so sorry to hear about that. Very surprising.
Thank you for that feedback.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I just have a comment also on the um, Oakview. Is that the road, the twenty mile? Yeah. Um, I have some friends that live on that, on that street and he said they've definitely noticed a slowdown in traffic. Um, you know, they, they've noticed a slowdown in traffic on the hill. So um, it's.
Good.
At least in their perception, it's working.
Good, excellent. Okay. That's all I have.
Okay, I'm gonna uh, fill uh, Peter's spot uh, tonight with just a little information. Uh, Jen King from the Fourth of July in the uh, fire department, uh, sent over a letter. I've given you all a copy of it. It's all that they'll have out there at the site. And she wanted us to have an update on where they're at. And uh, if there's anything that we need to be involved in, she wants us to know that uh, the LLCC uh, is awarding their, their permit for out there. I don't know if she has to come through to us. For that, I don't think she does. It'll just come to the city, right?
Right.
For backup.
I think, yeah, I, I just acknowledge that and it goes on to.
Okay.
The.
And then she wanted to give us an idea of the vendors that will be out there. There'll be a couple, but they'll have um, our local group of, out there. So that's gonna be exciting stuff. And they've managed to put it all together and I don't know how they did it to stay in that little area by the bus garage. But they've managed to get it all in there. So it's gonna be exciting. So if you get a chance, go out there and enjoy the Fourth of July. Um, and then on another note, um. We got the funding, so you already know about that. And then of course, I want to give my condolences to Peter. I've known him for a very, very long time. When I first started out in the city of Estacada, he was the first person I met on the tourism board for Clackamas County. Uh, him and uh, Daniel Cohen were essential to putting Estacada on the map and finding funding for our tourism programs. So I will miss him dearly. Um, we had many, many a conversation over the years about many, many different things. But he's always been an advocate for Estacada. So he will be sorely missed. Um, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Moving on, we are at council business.
We skipped the committee and commissioner liaison reports.
Oh, sorry about that. Go ahead. Any of your local groups? You want to report on?
I don't have anything to report other than the fact that hopefully everybody notices the, the downtown Estacada Commission has signs at all the intersections. Um, for the Fourth of July parade, letting people know that that intersection will be closed during that time. I think that was great, uh, a great move, new, new to this year. Um, and then all the new barricades and stuff that um, that they've, that they've gotten will, will definitely help. Um, you know, help with those closures, because it, it's been an issue in the past with people just moving cones. And driving, trying to drive through anyway. So, um, but yeah, those uh, signs are up everywhere. They could put, put a sign up. And uh, um, I think it's a, a good move. Those are signs that I like, informational signs, so.
Okay, moving on to council business. We have urban renewal assessment.
Okay. Just wanted to invite everyone to um, visit the past meeting, John LaGarza. I was able to be for the first half of me and I apologize for missing the second half and another meeting. But um, they laid out the economic development, strategic plan, scope of work on there, and they just hit some key points. I just wanted to share those with you guys and invite everyone to go take a look at all the work that the, the EDC is doing. Um, one of the first tasks is gonna be OEM recruitment strategy and industrial campus activation. Looking to get OEM manufacturer, how to, how to uh, encourage one of those companies into the park. And there's more, there's a lot of details for each of these sections. I'm just gonna hit the key points for them. Um, the second section was uh, mass timber ecosystem expansion and industry recruitment strategy. Something that can come alongside soldered timber and the CLT program out there uh, to bring, encourage other businesses that are in that same, same ecosystem. Uh, that can work well together to encourage other companies coming to our industrial campus. Um, uh, workforce housing, addressing workforce housing and lodging strategy for economic growth. Uh, one of the big uh, needs in our community is the availability of affordable workforce housing. So that people can, that work here can afford to live here and have places where they're able to do that. Uh, task four would be infrastructure investment strategy and marketing support for industrial, commercial and waterfront readiness. And then I believe there was five total. And then task five was workforce development. Prog, pragmatic, programmatic, planning for future CTE expansion. Um, that was the five key elements that we're identifying there, but there's a lot of work that's gone into the strategic plan. That they're gonna be bringing to the council. And so everyone just kind of check out, see what they're working on. A lot of John LaGarza is doing amazing job with working with all the people, um, the members of that committee. That are representatives of different businesses around town and they're investing their time and doing a lot of good work. So just want to recognize that committee.
Did you want to recognize the new bus route?
Oh, and I apologize. Yes, the city of uh, Sam came in and they, very quick, I apologize, thank you, Molly. Uh, Sam came in, a representative from Sam came in and uh, very quickly, they were able to adjust the SAM bus route. So that it actually goes through the industrial uh, park multiple times a day. Uh, the schedule's updated and they took it like, it was just a matter of like a, a couple of months, I think. They were, the idea got proposed to them. They went to their board, got approval and it was just, we're done, taken care of. So now um, there's connectivity from the Clackamas, all the way from like the Mount Hood area. I think it's a Clackamas route that runs up through Rotodendron, zigzag comes into Sandy. And then that connects with coming into Estacada. And then the SAM route that runs into Sandy connects to the metro as well. So there's connectivity for public transit coming through Estacada into our industrial park for, for people that want to use public transit. So that's, I mean, sorry, and I apologize for, she was very generous with her time and her, and the work that they put on that. Sorry for, for getting that. Yeah. Yeah. I just wanted to mention uh, National Night Out. Um, it's in August. Just want to keep that up in the air so everybody knows about it. Um, it'll be held across from the fire department. They decided that's the place to have it. And they're still working on the CPR first aid and the uh, self-defense class. But hopefully by next month, we'll have it hashed out. And there's still a spot on traffic and safety open.
Um, so I noticed that they had, I, I think it was this past weekend, they had the um, the, was it the?
The livestock?
The readiness, um.
Emergency ready.
Emergency readiness.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, the Oregon Livestock, uh, what is it? The uh. Yeah, it was the Oregon Livestock Committee.
Yeah.
That uh, put it on. I was up there. It was not a very large turnout, which would have been a lot bigger. I don't know how much information was put out. Um, the wife and I tried to put it out on Facebook while we were there, just kind of push it out. They had food, but uh, and Chief Mendoza was up there, but there was a lot of good information, a lot of kids swag too, so. Yeah.
Okay.
They were prepared for a larger turnout, for sure.
Yeah, we definitely need to, need to figure out a way to get, you know, get the word out a little better for the, for that kind of stuff. Cause that's, that, that was a pretty, I wish I could have gone.
It was good.
So.
Anybody else? All right, we are now at the uh, urban renewal assessment. John LaGarza.
All right, John, come on up to the mic. And if you go to, let's see, his staff report is starting on page thirty-nine, I think. But the um, report that he's gonna initially talk about starts on page forty. I didn't put it on the slide. But anybody listening, if you're looking at the packet, it's on page forty.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm the city manager and assistant city manager. I thought I was applying for the billboard sign in Oregon City to promote Park and Downtown tonight. Um, thank you so much and uh, some great uh, discussion on the signage or others. I really appreciated that too. Um, happy to be here, excited to be here tonight. Um, you know, a lot of cities in Oregon, we only have so many tools to work within our toolbox. And urban renewal is one of those tools that's really helpful. Having uh, what's called tax increment financing TIF, a lot of you, some of you are new to this. But uh, it really helps for economic development, infrastructure, economic development, community realis, you know, revitalization. Infrastructure. So about eighteen years ago, the city of Estacada set up an urban renewal agency here. And that was approximately two hundred and sixty-three acres here. And you went out and your maximum debtiness was six point six million dollars. And I gotta say, um, you guys did a good job, a fantastic job. In, in our report tonight, there's an assessment report that you'll see that we put together. Uh, to be able to bring awareness to the work that the city council and the city staff have done. In two thousand and seven, we went back and we pulled the county assessment data there with the access through the county to look at what the cities. That baseline was, and that was forty-seven point five million. Today, that's seventy-eight point six million. So that's a sixty-five percent.
Today, that's seventy eight point six million. So that's a sixty five percent growth that you had achieved there. So. That's great success and it's a great story to be able to think about taking urban renewal and continuing that that tool within your toolbox and your existing urban renewal, you're allowed to. Look at like what a new proposed boundary would be. And that's important for cities to do. So that's why we're here tonight to just say like, we've done this assessment. We're asking tonight, staff would like to get, you know. Two or three of the council members to be on a kind of a committee to look at a new boundary to study and come back to you and propose a new boundary for you to consider here. Your current urban renewal won't set set for a couple of years here, but now is the time to do that work and to study that work and think about what potential projects could be considered here. Some major capital investment programs that you did over the past was your infrastructure here in your downtown. That was close to two million dollars. That was funded through urban renewal. So again. Having the ability to bring those funds upfront earlier to do the work is a great benefit for cities and especially for rural cities. I promote them to. Think about having this tool in the toolbox. You had storefront programs, you had tenant improvement programs. Those are important for us when we're attracting businesses into our community to be able to help a business think about like. How can we improve the storefront or how we can have certain criteria to help attract people into our downtown? So that's those are important things that you did. Those were grant programs you had for signage, awnings. So. Continue to do those type of programs are really going to be fundamental. We have areas that are still need some support within the city. And so it's important to think about that there too. So I'm going to stop there and just answer any questions you might have there. No, I think everybody's on board with urban renewal. I know it's been very useful. It's it's taken Estacada leaps and bounds that we could have never done without it. And the fact that Estacada is so responsible with urban renewal. That's what has to be looked at here. There are two kinds of urban renewal you've seen. I give you examples every once in a while when we talk about this, but California is a bad example of urban renewal gone bad. Because if you're not responsible and you use that cash and you can't pay it back, you you know where it goes from there in California. It's a good example. But Estacada has never been like that. We pay as we go and we keep doing a good job and you see the outcome. I think urban renewal is going to, you know, the fact that Estacada is going, the places it's going right now. We're kind of in that climactic moment for for Estacada and I think urban renewal is going to be a major, major tool in this play. But I just want everybody to understand urban renewal fully. Because the pros and cons, because like I said, and I think Mike, you have a pretty good idea.
Yeah, I and I think the key component in this is education and just letting people know what. The Urban Renewal District is and is not and that it's and its impact on their taxes, that there is zero impact. On the taxes that residents pay, nothing's going to change with the amount they pay. It's where the increment of increase goes. Whether it goes to different sources or it goes to the district and and that is the key component, just the misunderstanding of. The expense to the person who's paying their property taxes, educating people on that component, I think is going to be the most critical part to that because that's where most of the. Pushback on urban renewals is people just misunderstanding that it's going to cost them more money.
A new tax.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman. And that's why we put together this final assessment report that's included in your packet and to have those and I and then work, you know, working with. Elena and Melanie, we talked about having a community outreach and doing some just basic one on ones to help people, you know. Schools, schools are trued up on an urban renewal. A lot of people try to, you know, and that's your to your point, absolutely correctly. It's it's not, you're not going to get taxed anymore. It's just you're trying to keep those funds in your city to be able to do projects that are important for the city. So.
I've seen it happen with the school bond and the and people misunderstanding the process of applying. The whether it was the assessed value or the the market value. And so people were thinking, oh, I'm going to have to pay thousands of dollars of extra and it was. They were applying it to the market value rather than the assessed value. So just that education piece is going to be a critical component of.
I agree.
Yeah.
So with that, if there's two or three of you'd like to volunteer and.
I'm definitely in. All right. Well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Great.
Counselor Blevins.
You want to do that?
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. We'll work with Melanie and Elena here and we'll get a time set up in July here to do the kickoff on coming and start talking about some boundaries. So greatly appreciate it.
It's exciting to. I'm just glad, just a few little words here at the end of it. John, you've you've leaps and bounds. In this area, having you on board with us and helping us along at this point is crucial. And I think you've done a great job. So.
Thank you, Mayor. And it's just been a pleasure working with the council, the staff, the business community. It's just, we love it. We we really appreciate being part of your team here. And I know this was a council goal and just, I'm excited. I mean, it's just. Estacada is doing great things out here. So I'm proud. We're just proud to be a part of your team here. So thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Okay, next on the list, I have second consideration for ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero zero five and ordinance amending title five. Business licenses, regulations of the Estacada Municipal Code.
All right, that was previously approved at your just prior meeting. So this is a second. Opportunity to vote and support that in support of that ordinance unless there's been any other information come to light.
I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero zero five.
I have a first, do I have a second?
A second.
First and second, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero zero six and ordinance amending title eight, health and safety of the Estacada Municipal Code.
All right. This, this was an ordinance that Peter had been working with us on and I believe that you all received a correspondence from an attorney. In regard to this and Peter was going to discuss that with us tonight. Unfortunately. I didn't ask him what he was thinking about as far as what he was going to tell you. And so I did speak with that attorney today. Ms. Margulis and she was. She had heard about Peter just a couple of days ago and or last, they were supposed to meet last Tuesday. So that's when she found out. She said that they were working on making the language more clear and developing a mitigation plan option and that she felt like they were. Being able to collaborate on it and and just take a really good look at it. And so it felt like it was a good positive conversation that Peter was being able to, because usually I don't I. I don't ever speak with an attorney. Once an attorney gets involved, it's, you know, Peter would handle that on behalf of the city. And so. It was nice to talk with her today and hear that Peter was working with her on it. My advice would be to hold off on this until we do have a a city attorney. To interface with her on our behalf and that or not, if it if that's how it doesn't turn out, but. That would be my recommendation is just to pause and pick it back up at the end of July. So it'd be a one month pause. And I know you've been working on this for a long time, so I'll leave it up to you, but that's that's my recommendation.
Do you need a motion for that?
In it was just a, we were going to have an executive session on that and he was just going to update us on our risk was my understanding of it is. Did it sound like from that conversation that? Yeah, I'm not looking at this being the first reading, the second reading would be at our next council meeting. Are we able to skip a council meeting for the second reading? I guess there wouldn't be much benefit if we're going to have the read next time. I'm just trying to.
Well, we could.
Move forward with the.
Right, you could vote on it tonight or you could wait till July fourteenth and vote on it then. The second reading would be with the with an attorney, hopefully, but.
I mean. But like. Realistically, before we even talk attorney or even a need for that, did she sound like there was any? Any problem with it? Because there's really, I mean, from what I understand, they've they've already filled all the obligations as far as our code is concerned, right? So they're up to code now.
They're working on that.
Okay.
Yeah, they're working. I think that it would be appreciated to take one more glance at it and make sure that it's just things are clarified, that we have all of our. The language in there to be as clear as possible. So it's not less just left up to interpretation. And I don't know what, being not an attorney, I don't know what the risk is either way. I know there's risk at not adopting it tonight. I know there's also a risk at. If we do, if we rush through and I just don't want to, I don't want to rush it and would like to have another opinion on it, but.
Is everybody comfortable with that?
I'm I'm comfortable with moving forward personally and and clarifying if we want to put a pause on the enforcement of it once it's in. To get clarity before we get, we can get the input of an attorney and if we need to do clarification on language later. But we can get it into our code and then we can just direct staff to wait on enforcement until I think with those timelines, we can keep moving forward with the code changes that we want. And then we can just direct staff to not enforce the new code until we've had that conversation with attorney. I'd like to keep it moving forward personally.
Sounds reasonable. You comfortable with that, John? I, you know, reading the Denver ordinance, I really liked in the Denver ordinance, the responsibilities they put on the business. And I remember asking if we had something like that and I'm not sure that we do.
So that's in the development code. And the planning commission voted to do some binder updates to the development code, which included removing cannabis businesses. From the industrial campus. So but the 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 things that you were discussing, like having the odor control plan. And that that's included in the development code. So that's that's in title sixteen.
Okay, so things like staff training and.
Yes, that so that, yeah, it it says they have to, they have to develop an odor control plan and the odor control plan includes things like. The filtration system, the staff training, it outlines that.
Okay.
Thank you for reminding me of that. I always forget we're talking about two different sections of the code.
And and that and that section will come before council in July. So the updates to the development code, which deal with. What is allowed in the industrial campus will come back before you in in July at your next meeting.
July fifteenth.
Yeah.
Right. Matthew, are you comfortable?
I am, yes.
Jerry.
Whatever council decides if there's a motion or vote.
Okay, well, so have you been up to speed on what it is we're talking about?
Ish.
Okay, okay. All right, I think I'm comfortable with Mike's assessment here of actually going forward with it and then. Having code enforcement hold off until we've got an attorney's advice on that.
Yeah, the fastest that it could go be implemented would be if you vote tonight, the second vote on July fourteenth. So it wouldn't actually go into the code until August fourteenth at this point. And at which time we could get some advice. But if there was anything like as another, a new person coming in and looking at it would have recommendations. I'm not sure if that would. Would have to do a revision, maybe drop this one and adopt a new one, but I'm sure we could. There's always a way forward. So this wouldn't have an actual impact until August fourteenth. If you vote for it tonight or if you wait. It's the same thing if you vote tonight or on. No, if you if you wait till the first vote on July fourteenth and the second vote would be July twenty eighth, so August twenty eighth, that would go into effect.
So just per our council rules, a motion, it's J in the rules of debate, actually, it says a motion to reconsider any action of the council. May be made by a member who voted with the majority during the same meeting at which the action was taken or the next follow or the next following regular meeting. So, yeah, I mean, if if, you know, we vote on it tonight and we decide sometime between now and the next meeting that. We want to, we want to table it, we can, we can make that decision the next meeting, then we vote on it the next meeting, then that following meeting, we can still make that call based on our.
My thought is if it ends up that we're not going to make any adjustments to it, we move forward with it. We can delay the enforcement if there's serious legal risk or something that needs to be modified that the attorney lets us know. We'll make those changes as necessary, but if our advice that we get, we'll just be quicker at getting enforcement for the nuisance nuisance orders.
Okay, that's it. Let's get a motion on the floor.
I move to approve ordinance two zero two five dash zero zero six and ordinance amending title eight, health and safety of the Estacada Municipal Code.
Second. First and second. Uh, let's do roll call on this.
Counselor Blevins.
Yes.
Counselor Dolezal.
Yes.
Counselor Hill.
Yes.
Counselor McRoy.
Yes.
Counselor Ten Bush.
Yes.
Mayor Drinkwine.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we are at the next citizen and community group comments. Do I have any online? Okay, Mayor and Council Reports and Comments is next. Would like to go first.
I just want to express my condolences to Peter's. Peter's family. And I want to express the importance of heart health. You know, I just went through my own heart scare and then the next week, you know, we lose, we lost Peter. So the importance of heart health, just, you know. Do what your doctor says, you know, cut cuts, cut a bunch of red meat out of your diet. I know we all love our red meat, but. You know, poultry, fish, fresh vegetables. If you've ever looked at the nutritional facts on a on a can of. Vegetables, it is insane how much sodium that they pack into that stuff. So, you know, just do what you can with your diet. Pay attention to your, you know, to your health in general, but heart health especially right now with what we're going through. And, you know. Take a walk, go for walks. It's pleasant like this time of year. So thank you, city staff. Thank you for everybody that showed up. We we got through a lot tonight. And we've got, we've gotten through a lot the past few weeks. It's been nice. Thank you, guys.
All right.
Just want to thank everyone that's here. I want to recognize Elena as well. I just, I think you're doing an amazing job. Thank you for all the money that you're saving, all the. Members of our community and I think there's going to be more money coming and wish we could give you a big bonus. I don't think they allow us to do that, but you deserve one. Thank you very much for everyone that supported you and all all the work that you did for the city on that and want to recognize John. Again, thanks, John, for all the information you're bringing to the meetings and the different, different things that you're doing for us. Appreciate you very much and want to congratulate Melissa. On her being sworn in and so good luck.
Nice segue. I just want to say thank you to everyone for the opportunity. I feel pretty blessed and fortunate. I know I didn't arrive to this as a traditional measure, but. I just hope that the community embraces me as much as I embrace everybody because I love it here and I love Estacada and I just. I'm really thrilled. I'm pretty jazzed, actually.
Congratulations. And thank you very much. The work you guys do on those grants is is just amazing. And greatly appreciated. And I am very excited. My oldest son and his family are coming for the July fourth weekend and we were just going to do everything. The going to wipe those, you know, the girls are six years old and three years old and we're just going to wipe them out between the parade. And the fireworks and the very next day we're going on the lake, renting some stuff from Clackamas River Outfitters. And we're just going to give them the whole, the whole inch. They've never seen a little city town parade before. They've never been on kayaks in a beautiful river like we've got right there. It's just going to be fantastic. Really looking forward to showing them everything that Estacada can be. Good, good.
I just want to thank Melanie and Elena and staff and welcome Melissa to the council. Don't forget about the Fourth of July and National Night Out. It's going to be a great, great time.
Okay, good. I just want to put a little word out. I had the opportunity to go visit Kismet Farms out there and her animal rescue. Awesome stuff out there. I fell in love with a pig. She's got a lot of animals out there and they all need help and she's got a fundraiser coming up here in July. So if you get a chance, go out there and visit the farm and save the animals. I'm an animal freak, so I had to put that in there. Again, Melissa, thank you. I think you're going to be a great add on. I think you'll do great work and like I said, some days will be quiet like this, others will not. So enjoy the moment. And good luck to you. Again, Peter, like I said, he was a good friend and I will miss him. And staff, you did a great job and thank you. And that's it. Have a great Fourth. And enjoy yourselves. And this meeting is adjourned.